City Council Forum for Candidates on the August 28 Primary Ballot. Tonight's forum is being hosted by the League of Women Voters, Greater Verde Valley, and co-sponsored by the Sedona Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau. For those who can't be here in person, we're arranging to have this broadcast and taped. The Sedona Chamber is going to be doing live YouTube, and Verde Valley TV will be videotaping the opening statements and the questions at the beginning of the forum, and they will be played on Cable 1, Channel 56, Southern Link Channel 2, and the Verde Valley TV YouTube channel. My name is Mary Shaquen, and it is my pleasure to be a member of the League and your moderator for tonight's forum. The League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan political organization, envisions a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. The purpose of this forum is for the audience to get to know and hear from the candidates on why they want to be a councillor for the city of Sedona. It is also an opportunity for the audience to give questions to the candidate about issues that are important to them. The goal for the forum is fairness, civility, and engagement. At this time, I invite our co-sponsor Jennifer Wesselhoff, who is the president and CEO of the Sedona Chamber and Tourism Bureau, to say a few words.
Thank you, Mary. And thank you to the League for co-sponsoring this event with us. We're very proud to sponsor this event and have been performing community services like this for more than 65 years in the Sedona community. But most recently, in partnership with the city council, we are changing the way that tourism is managed because of the shared concerns about traffic and quality of life. We're super excited about the first sustainable tourism plan that's nearing its completion in an effort to really help educate visitors and disperse foot and vehicular traffic in order to lessen congestion. We are very excited to share information about our operations over the last couple of months, and specifically, many have been surprised that the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau is not funded by you, our tax dollars, our taxpayers, but the Chamber of Commerce function is funded entirely by our member partners, and the Tourism Bureau function is paid totally by bed taxes from our Sedona visitors. So unless you stay in a Sedona hotel or are a member of our organization, you don't pay for our programs. We have a new site available for you for a lot of information about Sedona tourism. It's sedonaturisminfo.com, and it includes some great information that we've been sharing in our Red Rock News articles and also online. So please visit sedonaturisminfo.com for more information. Thank you to our candidates, incumbents, and incoming potential candidates for your willingness to serve our community, and thank you all for being here today.
Thank you, Jennifer. There are a few more people I would like to introduce you to before we get started. They are our timekeeper, Mary Gassaway, who is sitting down here in front. She will rein in our candidates as they are talking. She's got a sign that says "1 minute, 30 seconds, stop." If they still get carried away, then I get to step in. I love that part. Also, Robin Pudumbauer is going to be wandering around and assisting at the different tables when we start doing the roundtable discussion, and I know we have other League members here as well that will help facilitate that process. Before we get started, I have a few guidelines. One, the moderator's role is to manage the forum fairly for the candidates and the audience with the goal of keeping discussion moving forward. Two, we ask four things of the candidates: Be respectful of each other's points of view; speak your mind freely; do not engage in personal attacks; and do not interrupt one another. I'm sure you won't do that, but this is part of the typical presentation I've done for eight years. The audience is asked to refrain from applauding or any other way demonstrating support or non-support of any candidate and their comments. Time limits on responses to questions will be strictly observed, and it becomes my responsibility to make sure that happens. During the roundtable discussions, be respectful of the time and allow all who want to ask a question of the candidate to ask their question, and we ask the candidates to sort of limit the answers to your questions so everyone at the table gets a chance to ask a question if they like. Finally, if these guidelines are not adhered to by the candidates and the audience, it becomes my job to adjourn the forum. The candidates for tonight's forum, and I'm going to read them in alphabetical order. They have a different order up here because we drew numbers as to who was going to speak and what term. For four-year terms, we have three seats open: Bill Chisholm, Brock Delinsky, Janice House Hudson, Scott Jablow, incumbent, Noel Julian, Sam Tardio, and Jim Weiss are all candidates for those seats. And then we have one seat for a two-year term, and the two candidates are Mike Ward and Jessica Williamson, an incumbent. The format of this evening's forum: Each candidate will start out by giving one-minute statement. That's their opening statement, where they are asked to introduce themselves. Then each candidate will be given a minute and a half to respond to a question that the League of Women Voters provided ahead of time. Then following the League question, there is a Sedona Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau that each candidate will be asked to respond to, and they have also received that question ahead of time. Just as a reference, let me share those questions with you, and candidates, I will repeat them before you have to get up here to do your questions, okay? The League of Women Voters question: We know that you have lived in Sedona long enough to know that there are things you like and things that you would rather change about living here. Obviously, some of your opinions have been presented in your campaign, but we would like to narrow the focus a little. So what are the three specific things you like best about living in Sedona? And what are the three specific things you would change about Sedona? Each candidate will respond to that question. The Sedona Chamber question: Tell us how quality of life, tourism, and the environment are linked, and what role do you feel the city and the Sedona Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau respectively play in balancing quality of life, tourism, and the environment? Following the opening statements and questions, and in the spirit of civic engagement, we will be having a roundtable discussion between you, the audience, and the candidates. We will be dividing the audience, as you can see, into nine tables, 10 tables, and we will have each candidate come to every table. So there will be eight-minute process, and each candidate will come to your table and answer questions. We have a timekeeper who will make sure that we stay on that eight-minute time. Also on the table, we have some guidelines, if you're interested, and even some potential topics, in case you're interested in following that when you talk with the candidates. At this time, I would like to begin with the one-minute opening statements. As I said previously, prior to starting, each one of the candidates drew a number, and that's the order that they are. So just so that you know, for opening statements, Scott will be number one. For the League question, Janice will start as number one, and then for the Sedona Chamber question, Brock will start as number one. When we get to the closing statements, we do it all backwards. And we have Noel starting at number one while we do closing statements, okay? So at this time, I would like to invite Scott up for one minute at his opening statement.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Jablow. In 2010, I came to Sedona with 30 years of public service experience as a police officer for the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey. After settling down a few years, I applied for and was appointed to the Personnel Board and the Planning and Zoning Commission. In 2012, I decided to run for an one-seat on the Sedona Fire District Governing Board, and it was while I was on the fire board that I was successful in bringing a part of my past to my new hometown, Sedona. I was able to spearhead and build a World Trade Center memorial, a 9/11 memorial, at Fire Station Number 6 with no city or no taxpayer dollars whatsoever, totally funded by donations. 2014, I ran a successful campaign for the city council where I have been engaged in helping my city. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you all for coming this evening. My name is Janice House Hudson, and I'm running for one of the four-year seats as city council. I first came to Sedona about 15 years ago from my native Canada, and I just fell in love with this city. So in 2012, my husband and I chose to retire here amongst these beautiful red rocks. I had a long, successful career in government as a senior executive. I ran province-wide organizations like the Department of Health. I had billion-dollar budgets and 5,000 staff. I also was a CEO of a private healthcare company running a number of large hospitals. I believe in giving back to the community. I have been a volunteer with the Arizona Crisis Team, and for the last four years, I've been appointed to the city's Personnel Board and the Citizen Budget Work Group. I look forward to meeting you all tonight and answering your questions at the roundtables. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Brock?
Hi, I'm Brock Delinsky, and I'm running for one of the four-year seats on the city council. And I would like to think that all of Sedona's current problems and situations can be solved by looking at it through the lens of sustainability, and not just environmental sustainability or green sustainability, but cultural, societal, development, economic sustainability. I'm 36 years old, and I would like to think that I'm the future of Sedona, and people even younger than me are the future of Sedona. In 30 years, I'll still be here, and I'll have a lot more to gain or lose based on whatever we do decide to do now or not decide to do now as a community. So I kind of feel like I have a vested interest in this. That being said, I think we need to decide what kind of community we want to be, and I hope we decide that we want to be a sustainable one, and that we step up and lead the state, the nation, and ultimately, the world. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Chisholm, and like many of you, I care about this community. I feel I can leverage the people and leadership skills I developed over my military and corporate career and my sincere desire to get all angles of all the issues to make the correct, fully-informed decisions for our community. I earned a bachelor's science degree in computer science from Park College. I got a graduate degree, an executive MBA, from Rutgers University of Missouri. I spent 25 years in corporate America as a technology executive where I was personally accountable for $100 million expense-revenue budget annually, a $50 million capital improvement program annually, and managed an organization of 120 people. I am now retired and work part-time as a K-12 substitute teacher here in Sedona. I'm active in city government. I attend a lot of P&amp;Z and city council meetings, and I'm also a recent graduate of the Sedona Citizens Academy Program. I desire a balance between the needs of our residents, businesses, and visitors, and want to thank you for participating. I'm the first stop sign.
That's okay.
Hi, I'm Jessica Williamson, and I'm running for the two-year seat. I moved to Sedona about 15 years ago. I live in West Sedona with my husband and my dog. Hi. I retired from the New York City Department of Design and Construction as a Director of Departmental Affairs. On 9/11, I was in my office at work when the planes hit the towers, and I watched them fall. My agency was responsible for cleaning up the site, and I worked down there for a couple of months. That experience left me with a profound respect for how professional, experienced, committed public servants can make things better. I served on city council from 2012 through 2016 and was appointed in last April to a vacant seat. My experience, knowledge, and commitment earned me that appointment, and I am truly honored.
Thank you, Jessica.
Hi. I'm Sam Tardio. I'm 68 years young, been married to my high school sweetheart for 49 years, and we've been here for 23 years. I believe in a healthy business environment, and I'm particularly proud of the success I had of our business, starting from a one-car dirt floor garage, growing into a mid-sized Chicago manufacturing company providing steel stairs for commercial, industrial, and high-rise buildings. Moving here to Sedona, we enjoyed our home decor store called Casa de Sedona until we couldn't survive the 179 season of four years of... Ooh, time went up. Anyway, we've enjoyed the success. My greatest achievement, though, has been having a hand in raising three sons that are good people, accretes to society. They bless us with seven grandchildren, and it's their future and the future of this city that concerns me, and that's why I'm here campaigning for the council. I might be here in 30 years, I don't know, but my grandchildren will probably be here, so I care.
Thank you, Sam. Jim?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Weiss. I'm running for the four-year term for the council. I've lived here for over 20 years, and in that time, I've served in projects in the community. I was also... One of the projects was Red Rock Fantasy that I did for several years. Another one was the Sedona Main Street, where we were involved in putting on the different events for the community. Also for the library, I participated for years with making wreaths for the library so that they can raise money for the library cause, and I really appreciate the community and just love living here in Sedona. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Mike?
Hi, I'm Mike Ward. I'm running for the two-year seat. I retired to Sedona in 2002 after 30 years of education experience as a high school teacher, a dean of vocational education at two community colleges, and I ended my career as the founder and department chair of a computer aided design program and parametric modeling program. When I got to Sedona, I became involved with the Friends of the Forest for 16 years. I've done that now. I served two years as president and two years as their vice president. I'm a 13-year member of the Verde Search and Rescue, which is a branch of the Abapai County Sheriff's Office. I served five years as their captain and two years as their training officer. I was elected to council in 2010 and served until 2014, and I'm currently a volunteer for the Sedona Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Noel?
Hello, my name's Noel Julian. I am running for one of the four-year seats. I moved here with my husband to enjoy a beautiful natural environment within a small town. I've always known I wanted to find my own small town after growing up overseas and moving around a lot. I'd really like to lend a voice to residents, to you all, and help to improve the quality of life for the visitors, the residents, and to protect our environment. I've worked for the past 10 years in software sales, handling multimillion-dollar books of order for a very large corporation. I've also, prior to this, owned my own vintage clothing company, so I am in touch with the needs of many of the business owners here. I have a degree from William &amp; Mary. I graduated in 2001 with a degree in international relations with a focus on sustainable development and a minor economics. I think that I have the necessary experience and educational background to really fill this role and to, you know, give everyone here a voice, so thank you very much.
We will now go to the League of Women Voters question, and let me read that again so you have it fresh in your memory. We know that you have lived in Sedona long enough to know that there are things you like and things that you would change about living here. Obviously, some of your opinions have been presented in your campaign, but we would like to narrow the focus a little. So what are the three specific things you like best about living in Sedona? And what are the three specific things you would change about living in Sedona? Each candidate will have a minute and a half to answer this question, and we start with Janice.
The three things that I still like about Sedona are the three things that actually drew me here initially. I first came to Sedona about 15 years ago on a spiritual retreat, and I'm still in awe of the energy that I draw from these beautiful natural resources here. Another reason I kept coming back was the way that I was treated by the people I encountered. Every time I came to Sedona, everyone was warm and welcoming and very helpful. And finally, I really enjoyed the diverse culture that we have here: the music, the festivals, the theater, the art walk, the ballet, and for people like me who quilt, there's even a quilt show. The three things that I would like to alter in Sedona are really those things that are in my platform. We need a sustainable tourism plan for our city that respects quality of life issues for the residents as well as environmental and economic concerns. We need to create a range of housing alternatives for our seniors, our young families, and our workforce so they can actually live here. And we need to tell the state that short-term rentals are having a negative impact on our neighborhoods. We need to support appropriate economic development. If we don't want to be reliant on tourism, we need to support entrepreneurship and innovation in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice.
So this is kind of hard to whittle down to three things that I love, but I'll give it a shot. The first thing that I love about Sedona is our access to the outdoors. It's like unprecedented anywhere in the world. We can literally hike a different trail every day of the week, go mountain biking. We have access to all the northern Arizona, southern Utah, and all its national parks. The second thing I love about living here is the fact that we're a town the size of 10,000 people, and we have all of these amenities. We have Whole Foods, Natural Grocers, 24-Hour Gyms, all these international film festivals, art centers, all these things that a typical town the size of 10,000 people simply just does not have access to. And the third thing that I love about living here is the fact that everyone is creatively inspired by something, and I really love learning from different creative people and like taking on new ideas and things like that. Some things that I would change, first and foremost, is the diversity or lack thereof. We simply don't have any diversity by any metric of any standard, such as imagination. Second thing that I think I would change would be the fact that we have lack of affordable housing. There's like lots of new families that want to move here that simply can't find a place, or there just isn't anything available, or they can't afford it. That's a problem. And the third thing that I would change would be the sustainability. We're perceived as a sustainable kind of outdoor mecca of the world, and we have very limited options for recycling, very limited options for like all these single-use plastics that we have in town, and just a general awareness about how our decisions every day affect the planet. Thank you.
The three specific things I like about living in Sedona are, number one, a sense of community, specifically my neighbors and friends, and the shared passion about protecting Sedona. Number two, the cultural and educational opportunities that exist for us here in Sedona. My wife and I enjoy the variety of restaurants, outdoor activities, the various events that occur, and the opportunity to be exposed to or get involved in a number of great organizations that exist in this city. Third, I like the fact that I have an opportunity to follow a passion of mine teaching here in our local schools. The three things specifically I would change about Sedona, excluding the discussions about home rule and permit-based adjustment and traffic and city advertising, the first thing is the current Arizona's short-term vacation rental policies, while positive for a number of our residents, thus have negative impacts when addressing whole homes and the erosion of neighborhoods. Second, citizen engagement. The citizen talent pool in this city is outstanding. We need to work together and engage in civil discourse to address our challenges and differences. A byproduct of that engagement will be an increase in our sense of community and an increase in confidence with local government. And finally, third, we need to assess our sustainability footprint. Let's draft a climate action plan. If for nothing else, to get a baseline of where Sedona is at regarding our carbon footprint, taking care of the environment is not only good for our future, the next generation, it's also in alignment with our community plan, and it's good for business.
Thank you. We've been asked from people in the back, if I could have the candidates please state your full name whenever you come up to answer a question.
My first love is the big sky and the clean air, and the fact that I can get the hiking trail in five minutes. Volunteers and entrepreneurs in this town are astonishing, and I have so much respect for what they do. And there's events for residents and families: Film Festival, Pumpkin Splash, St. Patrick's Day Parade. Thousands of residents come to these, and more come every single year. But Sedona should be left alone to manage our own local affairs. Local control is being undermined by the state, and it's hurting us. We need a robust and effective transit and shuttle system that tourists and residents use. The city's plan includes a shuttle system from 179 all the way up to the canyon. I think that we also need a shuttle system in town to get tourists to the trailheads. And I'm focused on changing city processes and regulation to make it easier to build rental housing in Sedona for our workforce. We need to expand our ideas about what can be built here if we want that to happen. If we keep doing what we're doing, it's not going to happen.
My wife and I came here for an impromptu weekend, and as we drove into town, we knew this is where we had to be. Within hours, we were searching for property, and within weeks, I informed my customers that we were moving. We left a higher lifestyle, a fair trade for the quality of life we gained. Unfortunately, that quality to me is waning. It's partly my fault because I saw the seeds of it many years ago, but I buried myself in my own life, and I ignored it. Beauty is still here, but thank God the rocks can't be rearranged, otherwise we'd be cutting roads through the magnificence that supports our spirit and our economy. I think we've been terrible stewards of the growth of this town. We've lost our persona and replaced it with benign commercialism. We've allowed uncontrolled growth while ignoring progress because progress is enhancement, and after 23 years, I don't see Sedona as being enhanced. We had the opportunity to embrace growth with a cohesive design plan, yet the best we could do is tell McDonald's that they couldn't have golden arches. I hear the word sustainability so much these days, and yet it hasn't been applied here. Instead, the focus has been on how many tourists we can stuff in and how many days out of the years we can attract them. The city has lost any semblance of balance between business and residents. The obsession and focus has been on growth and blind forethought of the consequence. There is no accountability, no transparency, no communication, because our leaders, in my opinion, are fitted with blinders led by the carrot of profit. I've always been a businessman. I fully support business until it lives off the pleasure of the heart of our city, and that's the residents. I'm here today because I can't stand to watch the demise any longer.
The three things that I love best in Sedona are the sunsets, the rainbows, the snow, and the wildlife. There is so much wildlife since we've moved here that we've seen over the years that we've lived here, all on the red rocks. It is one sight that you can't see anywhere else, and we really enjoy that. Also, all the arts. There are so many different types of arts that are available here in Sedona, from paintings, glasswork, ceramics, any type of art that anybody wants to get into can be gone into and worked and make sales and all that. And Sedona is known for all the arts that has taken place here. And also the different events. That's another thing I really enjoy here, where they have Oktoberfest, St. Patrick's Day Parade, and trick-or-treat event and all that, which it brings a lot of people and a lot of people from out of the state that comes back for certain ones of those so they can enjoy those events, and they come back. The three things that I would like to change in Sedona would be the traffic, housing, and the panhandling that has been, over the years, that have been happening here. Thank you. Thank you.
Mike Ward. Well, all of my first three choices have been taken this evening, but I will tell you that one of the things I like about Sedona is the wide-ranging diversity of opinions regarding issues that affect Sedona. And not only that, but the opportunity for people to actually discuss them and listen to one another in a civil manner, and that's unlike the rest of the country. About the things that I would change. First of all, I would change the erosion of our small-town character that's been going on over the last 10 years. And this character has been boldly stated in our vision statement and our community I would also change the city's increased interest in focus on tourism. And finally, a recent study that showed that 92% of the Sedonians were interested in fostering better stewardship of our national lands. Unfortunately, the escalating damage of the human impact on our forest lands that drew us to Sedona is being quietly eroded away. We've had a dramatic increase in foot and ATV traffic on the trails. There's a proliferation of unmaintained social trails, growing graffiti vandalism throughout the forest, and the desecration of historic archaeological sites and dwelling sites. And finally, the overcrowded trailheads and the places that we enjoy, they've become like Disneyland.
Hi, my name's Noel Julian. I love the water, the monsoons, the beautiful swimming holes we have, and I love that my neighborhood is on the Oak Creek water supply, and I get non-chlorinated, non-floridated water at my house. I just love that. I love the amazing backgrounds of our residents who have different viewpoints and so much education and accomplishments and experience that they bring to this town. I think that the beauty of Sedona really touches our souls, and I think this is evident in the amazing spiritual mecca that Sedona has become. You can commune with nature, go on a yoga retreat, get in touch with the metaphysical community, attend churches of any denomination, go to your synagogue, or even spin a Tibetan prayer wheel. I think this is just outstanding for such a small town. The things I'd like to change, I would really like to focus on the quality of life for residents so that we can make sure that families can live here. I think dealing with the short-term rental issue is really paramount, so that we can attract and maintain families and keep our schools open. I'm very concerned with density and zoning changes that will allow Sedona to become urbanized. People don't visit Sedona or live in Sedona for an urbanization or for an urban community. We live here for the natural beauty of this place. And finally, in terms of transportation, I would really like to implement a ride-sharing here. I think that the Lyft shuttles model, which is a beta program in Chicago and San Francisco, could be readily implemented here, which provides a... Thank you.
My name is Scott Jablow. Three things I love in Sedona, some of them anyway, is I love the passion of the arts by our local artists, and I also love the passion of volunteerism. We have hundreds of people who volunteer for hundreds of different jobs. It's amazing. Being from Long Island, I love Sedona's clean air and water, and of course, the dry heat. As a retired police officer, I really enjoy and appreciate our low crime rate. Things I'd like to change: I want to continue with my campaign pledge from 2014 to better manage our traffic problem and to be able to institute our Sedona-in-Motion traffic plan. I want to work with our state legislators to better manage our vacation rentals, and I want to work harder to follow our community plan and bring more environmental changes to our city. Thank you.
Hopefully you don't break this. Our final question is from the Sedona Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau. And again, the candidates will each have a minute and a half to answer the question. And the question is: Tell us how quality of life, tourism, and the environment are linked. And what role do you feel the city and the Sedona Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau respectively play in balancing quality of life, tourism, and the environment? And we will begin with Brock on this question.
Brock Delensky. So quality of life, tourism, and the environment are all intrinsically linked, both positively and negatively. We have a great quality of life because of our natural environment, like no place else on earth. So this in turn brings tourists here because they're coming for our environment, and then they potentially can harm it with overuse or parking or capacity issues, things like this, which in turn can affect our quality of life. However, without the tourism industry and the subsequent four million visitors, we wouldn't have the infrastructure and all of the art things and all of the programs that we have in the community. So I think that all of these things are part of two sides of the same coin. You can't have one without the other two. The role of the city, the chamber, and the tourism bureau is to oversee quality of life and the environment and tourism in a sustainable manner. The definition of sustainable is able to last or continue, or not depleting resources now for effects of the future. I think that all three bodies need to be cognizant that every decision that they make either harms or helps the environment, tourism, and quality of life, and ultimately affects our future. Thank you.
Think Chisholm Trail. Bill Chisholm is my name. There are several factors we use to assess our quality of life. Some of these may be traffic-related, access to arts and culture events, dining options, sense of community, and safety. Tourism influences many of these and other quality-of-life factors. While I would like to diversify our economy, the reality of today is that tourism provides the demand for many of the things we as residents enjoy. These benefits do not come without a cost. Excessive tourism impacts our transit system and places an additional burden on our man-made and natural resources, for example, trailheads, the Oak Creek ecosystem, and our wastewater plant. These additional burdens do affect our quality of life, and they impact the visitor experience as well. A balance is required. Regarding the chamber's role, I support all business members of the community working to inform their customers about ways they can keep our city beautiful. For example, minimize or eliminate the use of plastic, leave no trash behind, et cetera. In my opinion, the chamber does have a civic responsibility to work toward the balance as outlined by the city. Regarding the role of the city, the city representing the greater, all-inclusive constituency must be the primary priority and goal setter in directing expenditures of public funds. The city needs to provide guidance and leadership to city staff and apply influence with the Arizona League of Cities and Towns and the Arizona Legislature, all with the goal of achieving balance between the needs of residents, businesses, and visitors.
Jessica Williamson. Sedona has tourists. They've come for years, and they will continue to come, but they do impact our environment and our quality of our life. The city's role is to make the policy and create the vision on how to move forward to invest in the community and better manage the traffic, tourism, and protect the environment. The city uses its resources to achieve that vision. What it can't do in-house, it contracts out to do because these things have to be done. The chamber's role is to support and help the city achieve its vision under a service contract. The chamber operates a visitor center, and that's a great example of how the chamber can support the city. The chamber can also implement some of the sustainable tourism elements under a city contract. Redirecting the chamber contract to sustainable tourism is the right way to go. The city doesn't have sufficient resources to do it all alone, and it makes sense for the city to contract with other organizations to assist in that effort. That is a priority of the city, is to manage tourism, manage the impacts, and move forward in a way that benefits all of Sedona now and in the future. That's the city's role, but it can't do it alone. It needs everybody to help. It needs to contract some things out.
Again, Sam Tardio. So with exception to health and financial problems, our environment pretty much determines our quality of life. In a destination city like Sedona, tourism has a great influence on that quality. Local government has a greater influence, and when it is responsible, the people prosper, and if not, they grumble. If their grumbling isn't heard, they get angry. This city council minus one voice has been irresponsible and ignored the people while it tries to satisfy the thirst for growth of tourism. And sadly, I'm disappointed that the League of Women Voters believes that any question should have been submitted by the chamber. The chamber is the focal point of much of the anger, larger than any other issue in this city with a hand in our traffic problems. Joined at the hip to our city council while receiving outrageous funding, the chamber has a sweetheart deal valued at millions of dollars per year. To say that they have no stake in the outcome of this election is laughable. No Indian incumbents standing here are in bed with them, while others here oppose this nonprofit organization profiting from their tight relationship with this city. The chamber isn't in this alone. The city council, with the exception of one, has disconnected from the residents. They acted surprised and disappointed that neighborhoods fought the imposition of connector roads affecting their lifestyle and property, and at a price of $12 million, their Uptown project fails miserably in its goal while it destroys the very fabric of this city. This mini-Vegas bastion is sure to disappoint our tourists. So what else is next? The people need new leadership. Sedona should be a council-run city, not a staff-run city, as claimed by one of my opponents.
Jim Weiss. In reference to the stats gathered on this topic in 2017, the quality of life, tourism, and environment for the city of Sedona are intertwined tightly and cannot be separated. Being a collection of economic fundamentals, our residing community agrees that our tourism is the lifeblood of our economy. So it is important that the city of Sedona to recognize this local valuable economic resource and give it support. And with the many positive benefits enjoyed from our tourism industry, the city of Sedona also has suffered with some negative consequences as well. One of the consequences being cigarette butts and trash that is carelessly tossed about our beautiful city and the lands. The city of Sedona should review the littering laws and strengthen them where they can. It can be, it would be helpful for the chamber, Sedona Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, to team up with the city of Sedona and help to educate the public in littering laws making it their various advertising medias. Years ago, there was a national advertising campaign to stop littering. In that campaign, a Native American chief was shown looking over the land with a tear rolling down his cheek and effectively communicated the damage caused by littering. Perhaps the city and the chamber could be in resources, using the resources, and create a public... Thank you.
Mike Ward. The chamber prefaced the question that they sent to the candidates by saying that the Community Livability Report in 2017 showed that 86% of residents in Sedona feel that quality of life is good or excellent. But this is what also the study said. Only 52% considered the overall ease of traffic to be good or excellent. Only 38% believe travel by car as being good or excellent. Only 32% rated public parking to be good or excellent. And only 24% thought the traffic flow in the city was good. With regard to governance, only 31% believe the city's overall direction is good or excellent. Only 34% thought the city is acting in the best interests of the city, of the Sedona citizens. 40% believed in the city's honesty. Only 42% felt that the city treats everyone the same. And at the section at the end where it talks about growth of industries, with tourism, only 18% strongly supported increasing tourism. 25% somewhat supported increase in tourism. 24% were somewhat opposed, and 33% were strongly opposed. Perhaps Sedona has reached a tipping point about their quality of life, and this election will give us a clearer opportunity to indicate whether we need change or whether we're happy with the way things are. Thank you.
Noel Julian. It is clear that tourism is vital to Sedona and allows many of our residents to live and grow their businesses here. It's also clear that a unique environment such as Sedona will become under strain from overuse. We must always strive for win-win solutions, and I believe that happy vacationers are paramount to maintaining the economic benefits that tourism brings. So I believe the important shift that must take place is to focus on the quality of visitor experience over sheer volume of visitors. We all want vacationers who stay in hotels, eat at our restaurants, shop in our shops. This is also the fundamental goal of the chamber. One area that I see that could have a dramatic impact would be a mobile app created jointly by the city and the chamber. This app could set us apart as a vacation destination, provide readily available, clear, concise communications. We could have info even on how to drive in the roundabouts. Our goal towards sustainability could be met with greater ease as people quickly learn about options to get out of their cars into ride-sharing carpools or shuttles. Crucial fire ban and emergency information from the city could also be delivered quickly. All sustainable solutions are moot if people do not have the information. Getting visitors into our business is all about proper communication. This platform could deliver this and maximize revenues. Making sure our visitors have the best time while also understanding the needs of our residents is not mutually exclusive. With appropriate partnerships, we can protect the environment and improve the Sedona experience for all.
Scott Jablow. Whether we like it or not, tourism is a foundation of Sedona's economy. 65% of the city's sales tax revenues are generated by visitors. The dollars visitors bring allow us to pay no city property tax. We have no food tax and have very low fees for many of the services and activities. That certainly enhances our quality of life, I think. Tourism also contributes to our quality of life by allowing us to enjoy restaurants, arts, and entertainment venues that we wouldn't have if we didn't have the tourist base to support them. A recent study was done by the local residents, and they reported, on average, 80% of their customers were tourists. With sales tax dollars, we fund public safety, the dog, bike, and skate park, sports field, barber's park, maintenance of roads, rights of way, landscaping, beautification throughout our community, the acquisition of the Brewer Road property, the art in the roundabouts, and many, many other things. All of those things would simply not be possible without tourist funding unless, of course, our residents voted to enact a property tax and pay 100% of those things while the tourists paid nothing. Admittedly, with those benefits comes unintended consequences, like traffic and impacts on the environment. To address these things, the city has partnered with the chamber to complete a sustainability tourism study, or plan, which is well underway right now. Hopefully, that will give us some answers about where the limits on tourism should be and how to impose them.
My name is Janice Howes Hudson. As everybody has said here, tourism is really our main economic engine, and it provides us with many benefits. It helps keep our community It helps keep our community clean and safe. It allows us to support groups that actually add to our quality of life, like the Humane Society, or the Public Library, or the Community Center. And it also allows us to enjoy a number of restaurants, grocery stores, and activities that we would normally not see in a city of this size. But I recognize that tourism can cause problems. Traffic congestion and overcrowding are impacting all of us. We're all concerned about the overuse or misuse of our beautiful red rocks and Oak Creek. I acknowledge that tourism is out of balance in Sedona, and that is why I am such a strong proponent of the development and implementation of a sustainable tourism plan for our city. The city obviously has a funding role to play in this kind of plan, but it also has a critical role as an influencer with the state government, the Forest Service, and ADOT. The chamber has ongoing relationships with businesses that will play a significant role in the implementation of this plan. I strongly believe that a sustainable tourism plan will lower the impact of tourism on all of us and will improve the experience of our tourists who are coming to our city. Thank you.
Candidates, thank you very much. We're now going to move to our roundtable process. Okay, we'd like to get started again, please. If I could please have your attention, the candidates have the opportunity yet to make closing comments. And I know that each of the candidates is probably prepared with a wonderful closing statement for you, but I want to put a little twist in there if they're willing to do this. It's not a big twist, it's just a 30 minutes. If you are so moved to do so, just share with the audience anything that you learned or that it was an impact that you had as you were moving from table to table and interacting with the audience, if you're so moved to do that. Okay, Noel, you are up first. And again, candidates, if you would say your full name. And you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Hi, I'm Noel Julian. I'm trying to recompose myself. What I can say is we have some very engaged, very smart people who do really care about Sedona. I've heard that we care a lot about affordable housing. We care a lot about options for more sustainability environmental practices, and we do care about traffic. I think that, you know, the people in this room, I hope that I've heard you. I think that collaboratively is really how we get things done here. I'm very interested in, you know, citizen engagement and the citizens' committees. I think that those are wonderful ways. We have so many people in this room and in our town who have so much to offer. I think that, like I've said to many of you, we are a very unique town. We are a very unique city. We need unique, innovative, creative solutions and problem-solving on city council. I think that my background with my educational experience, my life experience, and my work experience would lend me to be able to be your voice and provide some of these solutions. I do think that win-win is important. I think that looking at all sides of a situation is important, and I think listening and working together is fundamental. I would like to bring more technological innovation, and innovation in general, to what we can do here. I've talked about Lyft Shuttle, I've talked about a mobile app, I've talked about housing cooperatives. I think there's a lot of unique and creative ideas, and I think that we need to have those voiced. I think that basically I would like to lend my voice, and if you liked anything that you've heard from me tonight, I really would like to ask for your vote in August. I am in my 30s, and I think that I have the energy and the time and the willingness to serve. So I thank you so much for listening to me. Bye-bye.
I'm actually, oh, I'm Mike Ward. I'm actually out of words, so I asked Noel to speak for me, so I just did whatever she said. You know, it's all about balance, and I feel that Sedona's been out of balance for the last few years. It's about balancing the way that people like to live here with the tourists that's helped support us. And I feel that we can restore that balance for the mutual benefit of everyone. Now, I'm not anti-chamber, although I get labeled that. I feel the chamber could be a very valuable partner with the city. The problem is, is we're not partners right now. They get $2.5 million, and then they tell us what they did with us, and then we go and say, okay. That's not partnership. What the city needs to do is take responsibility with the chamber for making decisions about how that, those funds can be spent for the best advantage of the city. We need to consider more seriously our vision of Sedona as being a small-town character in all of our decision-making process, and that has to be something that needs to be taken in consideration. As a community, we need to be more proactive for our city's desire to foster better stewardship of our forests around here. And what that has to do with is that has to do with the amount of traffic that we have on the forest. We need to redirect the city's focus away from just, how did I get that far already? Good, I don't have to talk much anymore. I just want to say that each of the candidates for the five open city council seats have but one vote. And if you want change, it's going to take five new members on the council dea's. The last thing I want to say is irrespective of whether Home Rule passes or fails, we need to pass the permanent base adjustment, because if we don't, we'll be left with a state-mandated amount that cannot support the city, and we need to change that for the future.
Thank you, Mike. You know, how about if we hold our applause until the very end?
Hi, Jim Weiss. Talking to a lot of the people out there, everyone has good ideas, they came up with suggestions, and the main thing is basically the traffic and how things could be done on that, the low-income housing issues, and so there's a lot of good ideas out there, and you need to have your opinions and voices heard by the council. And in so doing, I would appreciate your considering a vote for myself in order to make changes and so that you all would be heard in the council and so we can make a better community of Sedona and down the line into the future for the next generation of people to come to Sedona. In closing, I would like to say that I feel that I have new ideas and initiatives and just wanting to work to make sure that this is a better community for everybody that lives here to enjoy. I would appreciate your vote. I do have a motto, is be wise and vote for wise. Thank you.
Sam Tardio. You know, I just want to say, everybody here has a husband, a wife, kids, we're all family people. I know that under different circumstances, everybody here could get along, be good friends with people. I'm not out here to make enemies. I'm not out here to make this a personal thing. It's not a personal thing. It's a, for me, I don't like the direction that the city's been taken, and I think we could do better. Nothing personal about it. So if I said something that, and I try not to do that, I try not to ever make it that I'm criticizing somebody individually, but sometimes, I don't know if it just comes across that way or not, it's not my intention. I think we can do better. That's what it comes down to. I think the city can do better in a lot of ways, and that everybody will be happier. I don't want to make this like it's a brawl or something, because that's not my intention. Just need to get along. Can't we all just get along?
Jessica Williamson. As I went around from table to table, the one thing is utterly clear, is that nobody actually agrees about almost anything. Everybody agrees that traffic is a problem, but nobody agrees on what should be done, whether this will work, whether that worked, this won't work, that should be done. It's just amazing to me and very, very illuminating. I think that makes the job of council even more difficult, because given that incredible diversity of opinion, the council has to make decisions, and it has to make decisions based on fact and based on what's the best interest of the city as a whole now and in the long run. The fact is that it's not a win-win. The fact is that when we make a decision, some people are going to be unhappy with that decision. And that's hard to do on the council, because you don't want to make people unhappy, but you're making the decision that's in the best interest of the community as a whole, and that is our job. Sedona is a successful little city. We are so lucky to live here. Tourism creates some problems. We all know that. But I know we can address them. It isn't magic. It's what the city's doing now and needs to do more of. Address traffic, better manage tourism, and change regulations so that we can create workforce housing in this community. We have the resources, we have the expertise to address those challenges, but we need a council with vision and determination to get the job done. Saying that nothing will work, hoping that tourists go away, vote for me, Jessica Williamson, on August 28th. Thank you very much.
Chisholm Trail, Bill Chisholm. That's my marketing tag. Okay, what did I learn listening to Citizens Tonight? Well, most of you, 75%, actually go to the city website for information to get updated, so I'm very impressed. So thank you very much. And most of you stuck around for this whole thing. I'm very impressed with that as well, seriously. That's really cool. Thank you for being engaged. What did I hear? I heard traffic, affordable housing, short-term vacation rental. Listening to residents came, wasn't close forth. One thing I did hear that nobody else said, I never heard before, an idea of can we be, we're a dark-skY community, can we be a quiet community? Interesting. Why do I want to be on the Sedona City Council? My wife, Kim, and I moved here to become part of the Sedona way of life as we saw it. We had been visiting for seven, eight years in that range, and we wanted to be here long term. The community plan, this thing right here, outlines a vision for Sedona that describes a goal that, in my opinion, balances residents, business, and visitor needs. It's a vision that I support. All of our constituencies need the man-made and natural environment to stay in good repair and to be healthy. If elected to the council, I would be a voice of reason and collaboration. I will not be a business-as-usual counselor, nor will I be at all cost counselor either. I expect the city council to be more proactive than reactive regarding city finances and community plan alignment. A vote for me will be a vote for balance, and I'm asking for your vote in August and, if necessary, in November. Thank you.
Brock Delinsky. Again, I'd like to thank everyone for being here. I think it's important that we engage in interaction so we can learn and address the issues that are all important to us. For me, all roads lead to sustainability, and either they work together or they don't. I would like to think that it's amazing that everyone is passionate about sustainability, and that's something that I really learned when talking with all of you, that in some regard, some fashion or another, everyone kind of has a different idea about how sustainability can work. We were all drawn here for a reason, and I love the fact that everyone is thinking about the future, not just now, but how it like can either enhance our lives or not enhance our lives in the future. I also thought it was really interesting that everyone was kind of on board with a lot of my kind of out-there ideas on the affordable housing issue, and I wasn't sure how that was going to fly with tiny house communities and things like that, and everybody seemed to learn and ask questions, and I thought that was really cool. I think that a lot of these things are going to require thinking outside of the box, and without new ideas, we can't expect to have new results. Thanks again for being here, and if anyone would like to further discuss anything with me, I'd love to continue the conversation afterwards, and I encourage any and all feedback. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Short, and I'm Janice Howes Hudson. Thank you all for attending and for staying here, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the chamber for arranging tonight's forum. I think it's been very useful. I enjoy hearing from you all during the roundtables. Not everybody had the same opinion. There was a wide and varied range of topics raised. The three top ones that I found was traffic and its relationship to advertising. There's still a lot of questions out there about home rule, and the lack of affordable housing seems to be raising its head for a lot of people. I want to assure you that I have listened and heard what you have said to me tonight, and I will take forward what you told me as your city counselor. Just to reiterate, my name is Janice Howes Hudson, I have this double last name, and I'm asking for your vote in the August primary. But why should you vote for me? There's a wide range of people here, and they all have the best intentions. But I want to let you know that I have the most extensive government and public sector experience of all the candidates. That means that I can walk into city council and be efficient and effective right away. I can set priorities and balance budgets, particularly in times of difficult economic challenge. I have had decades of experience having to do this. What you don't know about me is I'm a certified mediator, negotiator, and clinical counselor. I have lots and lots of years of experience bringing diverse groups of people together to develop solutions to contentious issues, and I can do this for Sedona. And I believe in a moderate collaborative approach to governance. So you haven't had much chance to learn more about me, please go to my website. It's wwwjanisforsedona.com. I have a very multifaceted platform. I believe there's much more to Sedona than just traffic. And thank you for your vote in August.
Thank you all for staying this late tonight. I appreciate it. I always enjoy the speed campaigning exercises. It's a lot of fun. I appreciate it. Today, I learned that most people didn't realize that they have been misunderstanding the cause of our traffic. Most forgot that over 50% of the cars that come to Sedona drive right through. I have always agreed that we have way too many day trippers, and it's unfortunate that the chamber is being blamed when in reality it's the Phoenicians and others coming from south, from the south of us to cool off in the canyon. Remember, our roads are public state rights of way. They belong to everyone, and they, people can't be stopped. But our Sedona in Motion is a plan to help manage traffic flow. Without Home Rule, that plan may not happen. Some people tonight are saying that how spring break traffic has been the worst this year and how it's the chamber's fault. I was able to remind these people that prior to spring break, the chamber had an advertiser since January. Why would they be here for the spring break? But what people didn't know is that the correlation of traffic to the vacation rentals. I have to keep reminding people that while we now have 1,000 vacation rentals, that actually equates to 3,000 or more rooms, because most houses have more than one bedroom. Okay? These rooms come with multiple cars, and with these cars comes traffic, the likes of which we've never seen before and are not prepared to handle. Without Home Rule, we most likely won't be able to streamline our traffic pinchpoints like Uptown and Tlakapaki, which is where everyone has an issue, right? If you don't fix the problem, it's going to continue. I find it interesting that most, let me start. I find it interesting, most people complain to me about the possibility of another hotel with 85 rooms. I have to ask why they're not upset about the 1,000 vacation rentals with, like I said... I have to ask why they're not upset about the thousand vacation rentals with, like I said, three thousand rooms. They're not concerned about that, but they're concerned about a hotel, and they're rightfully so to be concerned about it. But my name is Scott Diablo. I'm asking for your vote on August 28th. Thank you.
I just have a few concluding comments. First of all, candidates, thank you. Thank you so much for being here. And to the audience, without your engagement, none of this could take place. So thank you all for participating, for the interaction. The candidates have shared some of the information that you have shared, and I think it has informed both of us or all of us as a part of the process. I have a few other quick announcements. Remember, primary election day is August 28th. The last day to register to vote, change your party registration or update your address is July 30th. Early voting ballots will be mailed out the week of August 1st. Completed ballots can be returned by mail or dropped off at an election location in Sedona. If you have not already registered to vote, we have the forms for both Yavapai County and Coconino County out at the back room. Also, on the table in the back, we have the website address where you can register online. So please, if you have not registered, do so. If you are registered as a non-designated independent, you can vote. When you go to your polling place, you will be asked to designate which party ballot you want. If you are a permanent earlier voter, you should have received a form from the county elections office which allowed you to select the party ballot you wish to vote. A ballot will not be mailed to unaffiliated voters until the election office receives a form from you, the voter, indicating your ballot choice. You may also make your choice by contacting the county election office by phone, email, or through the early ballot request website for Yavapai or Coconino County. I know that's a lot of information, but we want everyone to vote. Also, there are a couple of more forums coming up that the League of Women Voters is hosting. On Wednesday, July 18th, from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. at the Sedona Public Library, we will have a mayoral forum. Robyn Prudembauer will be moderating that. And then on Thursday, July 26th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., we will be hosting the forum on Sedona Home Rule. That will be at the Yavapai College Sedona Campus. Also, as some of the candidates mentioned, I'm sure maybe that there are questions that didn't get answered or that you want to interact. The candidates are willing to stay here after this forum to answer more of your questions and to provide any information that we can. I encourage you all to vote, and I thank you all for your presence here this evening.